Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November 22nd, 2021 Verona Board of Education Public Meeting. We're calling the meeting to order. It is 7:05. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 5th, 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call for attendance?
Sure. Mr. Alwar.
Here.
Mr. Day.
Here.
Mrs. Strapi.
Here.
Mrs. Fresky.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
We have Coram. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have a very full agenda tonight. We have two presentations. And our first presentation is the AP Scholar Presentation by Dr. Charlie Miller, Mr. Glenn Stevenson, and Ms. Julia Albertstrand. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hold on, Mr. Vilas. Okay, I think we're good. Mr. Vilas? Okay, so, good evening, everyone, members of the board, as well as folks in the audience. Thank you for coming. It's nice to see some of our high school students, maybe like some students who have graduated last year to come. And thank you for parents for coming out and supporting us. So we'll get started. So every year, we've been doing AP Highlights and Scholars Presentation. This is our ninth year doing this. That's important, like, we recognize students for what they do in the athletic field. Okay, we recognize students when they're in the band and plays, but it's nice to recognize our students who work extremely hard and work with, you know, classes that are challenging and filled with lots of work. So. Our Verona Public Schools Mission Statement and Partnership was a supportive community. We inspire our students to be creative, critical thinkers, and compassionate global citizens through dynamic teaching, meaningful curricula, and enriching experiences. Nothing embodies that more than tonight's presentation. Anyone again would like to come down and watch? You may. I will wait. Be careful, Mr. Cruz. Acknowledgements. I'd like to thank all the students who enrolled last year in all of our AP courses during an unusually challenging and difficult year, whether, you know, it was in school, out of school, and I say here, like, you know, anything in between. We appreciate your efforts during a really trying year. The teachers as well, who had to deal with, you know, not only did college board not really shorten their curriculum, they kind of kept it the same as usual, and we're not living in normal times, to try to condense the material and try to teach it to all of you was a challenge for our teachers. Parents and guardians, thank you, because I know a lot of you are working from home, and sometimes you may have been sharing the same table as your, as your son or daughter while they're trying to work on coursework. So from kindergarten all the way through our seniors, it was really trying being on the home front and where everything was happening in the same household. And, you know, eventually we found some good spots. I saw some kids, sometimes were like, working from underneath their beds, you know, out back on the patio. We wanted freezing, just try to find a place. So we learned a lot. We learned how to be adaptive. We learned how to be flexible. And we learned overall that maybe online learning is good temporarily, but overall, we like to be here and learn together. And thanks to our administrative team, our superintendent, Dr. Denise Yo, and our Board of Education for your support, because, you know, some of us, some of us on the board are educators. We know we were living through it, as well as the rest of our board members who are parents. Just tough times, and hopefully we won't have another year like that again. But we made it. And I think overall, as I go through some of these numbers, I still think we did fairly well despite all the challenges. So our participation, we've always... Got the phone, okay. So our participation, we started, it's before, before I was here, we started in 2009. We had 82 students who were in AP classes, and they, we administered a 145 assessments. So that was in 2009. So that's where we always have our benchmark. That's like year zero for Verona. And that was the year we removed the barriers. We, there wasn't, you had assigned things to get in. You didn't have to perform certain tasks. It's like if you were interested in taking AP Biology, you would take it. You wanted to take AP Physics, AP Literature, you now have the ability, working with your counselor and with your parents, to say, I would like to take this course for the following year. And as you follow the trend up, in blue are the students, and in red are the number of AP exams that are administered. If you look last year, despite all of the challenges that we had, we still had 294 unique students. That's nearly half the school. Take the assessments, I mean, sign up for the assessments, and a total of 585 tests were administered. So that's, that's still a pretty amazing number, considering all the hardships and challenges that we had. Unique participation, this is kind of neat. So in 2009, around 14% of our students were taking an AP class. And as, as you will notice, and I try to make, try to box stuff so you can see it, for the last five years, we've had over 40% participation. Last year was 43% of our students were enrolled in at least one AP course. And again, it's good to do this, because our belief is that if you take challenging coursework when you are in high school, then when you go to college, it's a little less scary. It's a little less, I don't know if I can do this, you can. And a lot of our teachers work really hard to provide the college experience for you while you're here at the high school. Participation for the last five years. So this is a neat little graph. Over the last five years, we've had, and I'll come up with the drum roll in a minute, but our most participated class over the last five years has been Environmental Science. We talk about it often. It probably should be a graduation requirement of students, because of everything that's happening in the world. But in terms of AP, we've had 283 students enrolled in AP Environmental Science over the last five years. Coming in second is Calculus, because we have an AB, which is one year of Calculus, I'm sorry, one semester, and we have BC, which is considered two semesters of Calculus. 256 students. Computer Science is 223 students over the past five years. Statistics, everyone's favorite course for mathematics, 214. Biology with 213. And then AP Psychology with 212. So really strong participation. These are the ones that I just said that are like, you know, in the top five and six. There are others that have great participation as well. And over the past five years, we've administered nearly 3,100 AP assessments to our students, which is, which is kind of neat. It shows that the opportunity is there, and that a lot of you are taking advantage of that opportunity for hopefully, you know, we've had some students that start college as sophomores, because they have so many classes. And if the college accepts these credits, it's wonderful for not only you, but for your parents. That's really nice. So percent of total AP students with scores three or better. So this is a look and a graph of the last five years. So to explain this clearly, 2017, we had 287 students that were enrolled in AP, and 207 students scored a three or higher. So that was, you know, when you take 207, and you divide it by 287, 207 divided by 27, you get 72%. If you follow the line, last year, we had 294 students. We had 187 students, so that is a drop. But considering that the times that we had, we're still glad that students were here, and we all hung in there together. So 63% of our students, so nearly two-thirds of our students earned a score of a three or better. And then here's a graph for people who don't like charts. Here's a nice little graph. It's easy to follow. And again, you show 72% in 2018, 72, and then it was going up. And then when COVID hit, we dropped a little, but we, we, we expect, maybe not this year, but next year, to get back up to nearly the four-fifths, 80%. It's going to take time for all of us. We were at elementary school, working on professional development, and we see how it's affected us even down at those levels. So it will take time for us to catch up, but we will. There's a nice little report here. It's called the Equity and Excellence for Verona High School in Fall '21. So the top line talks about the graduating class summaries. So the graduating seniors last year, nearly 60% of the students, the seniors scored a three or higher on at least one AP exam during their career. So nearly three fifths of our students. And to give you an idea of the scale, a one is the lowest score you can get, and five is the highest. So three is considered passing. For some colleges, a three is enough to attain credit. Some colleges, it's four, and sometimes it's five. Or sometimes it may be, thank you for taking that. You're still going to take Calculus. So we'll have to see where, it's wherever you're enrolled, or you want, wherever you want to go. So, and then the bottom three rows, it talks about percentages. So 12th grade, 36.1, 11th grade, 38%, and 10th grade, 17.4. And that's the number of AP students per grade level who scored a three or higher on at least one AP exam last year, and divided by the total number of students in the grade. That's a little down from, from the prior years, but again, dealing with, considering the circumstances, I focused on the top one, the graduating class summary. It's still pretty cool to have three fifths of our students earning at least a three in one of the exams. And some took up to 11 or 12 classes. So still a cool stat. So before we get to the awards, we always like to highlight some classes we think that do a really good job. And just to preface this, we think all of our teachers and students work really hard, but there's just some things we've seen over, over a long period. In the research world, it's called like a longitudinal study. So you see what happens over time. Chemistry, AP Chemistry has the reputation of being the most difficult course, and students pay nod in our school. And Chemistry is very abstract, and it's hard to see. And so it's, it is challenging. I can remember back years ago, it was challenging. But over the course of time, the averages have been extremely, extremely strong. Last year, it was a drop last year, but still considering overall, the, since 2012, the average is nearly a four. So the students that are in there that put in the time, a lot of times, it pays off. So Chemistry always comes up strong for us. We had two classes where the scores actually increased last year. This was one of them. That's correct, right, Ms. Albertson? Yes, I'm just getting that nod. AP Computer Science Principles. That was a course we adopted in 2017. We initially partnered, I think, with Harvard to work on this. And it's a cool course, because it introduces a lot of our students who have no idea what computing is and working with some basic languages. This does that. We had students go up from a three average, which is 2.98, up to a 3.64. And there were 33 students that were in the class. So that's a remarkable, remarkable score. And it involves the use of a critical portfolio and projects. So there's a lot of work that goes into this course. And we think, we like to talk about this, because it was one of two really bright spots of actually increasing the average, considering last year's difficulties. So last year, the last five years, the average is a 3.2. And again, a three is considered passing. And, you know, last year's a 3.64 average. Average AP English Lang. So this tends to be for our juniors. Once in a while, there's a senior who was in there, but over since 2012, the average score is a 3.65. And if you take a look, well, I, it's, it's just become so long. Initially, we had averages around three, three and a half, if I go back to 2009. And there was about 10 or 15 kids. And we've shown over time that sometimes the classes triple, quadruple, and the averages still stay strong. So last year was a little lower than usual, but a 329 is still respectable. And there were fours and fives in that. So again, the students that worked really hard with this. This is a tough humanities course. It may not be the most interesting English course, but it's taught by Dr. Meyer, and she does a wonderful job with this course. This is Mr. White with AP English Lit. Again, a strong tradition over time, around 3.26 since 2013. Last year, it looks like it's down a little bit, but if you go back to 2019, the average is better than when it was, you know. So this is a respectable score for Mr. White, and the students, again, working really hard. It requires the knowledge and understanding. And if any of you are in, in English Lit now, there's a lot of books, novels, first stories, poems, et cetera, that recalls, you know, you have to be well-read to do well in this course. And I think Mr. White does a great job with that. Average AP French Score, which is next. Over time, I just say, you know, there's been good participation here, but what really stands out to me last year is that, you know, Madame had nine students, and, you know, the year before, she had 10. But for the students to hang in there with a language that's different than English, because English is difficult enough, but to earn a score over a three with a world language, and having nearly the same number as the year before, is a testament to the students and to the professor here, the teacher. And the average since 2013 is 3.27. So to, you know, work with French, it's not introduced until middle school. In middle school, we've made an adjustment. And while now there's an exploration in grade five, but the students who are in here, you know, I think is a great experience. And again, a testament to hard work all around. Human Geography, this came in in 2016. Ms. Wallerstein teaches this course. She, she loves this course. If any of you have had her, I go in this course, I wish I would have had a chance to take this course when I was in school, but I didn't. It wasn't offered. I had Geography in eighth grade. And it was just, you know, memorization. This is really cool, because it applies to what's happening in our world. And she makes it very tangible. And with her teaching, again, 39 students last year, and still an average of a 3.31. Her average over the past six years is 3.75. So if you're a student in this course, you have a shot at getting credit as an elective when you go to college. And, you know, I'm in there. I think a lot of you have fun with her, and it's, it's entertaining. Dr. Tambro with APUS Gov. I've been in there a few times. That's an interesting course. You noticed over time, it's kind of been up and down, but it's been in the threes, only one year where it was lower. But I think last year, again, he's a magnificent teacher. He really works well with our students and puts you in practical situations that make you really think, do I want to pursue law? Do I want to pursue working with the government? And I think some of you say yes. And a lot of this has to do with Dr. Tambro. And the average, again, is a 3.31 since 2014. And I believe this is a finally. For AP World, we started this in 2016, and we offer it to freshmen. So a lot of other school districts offer this to students that are in the upper class, juniors and seniors. We decided, why don't we give our grade nine students a chance to do this? If you look last year, this was the second course where there's actually an increase in the average test score. So 21 students, the average was a 3.9, which is nearly a four. So remarkable work on Ms. Subsy and all of her students. A lot of dedication, and, you know, learning took place last year, despite what some people said, despite the challenges, it did occur. And so now we get to the part where... Okay, it's just a message for me. My apologies. Where we get to our scholars. So our scholars broken into three categories. There used to be four, and I'll get into that. But in 2009, we had a total of 12 AP Scholars. And if you look over the years, if you look at the blue, the blue stands for AP Scholar, and that's a student who has three or higher on three or more exams. Then you get to the red. The red is an AP Scholar with Honor, and that is three or higher on four or more exams with an average of at least 3.25. And then in the orange-ish color, AP Scholar with Distinction, that's three or higher on five or more exams with an average of at least 3.5. And up until this year, they used to have something that was called the National AP Scholar. That was students who had a four or higher on eight or more exams with an average of at least 4.0. If you look at last year, we had eight national scholars. They have removed that award. I looked on the website, and it just says it's not there anymore. So we're going to celebrate AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, and AP Scholar with Distinction. So for reference, we had 48 students last year, last spring, who were AP Scholar. We had 11 who were Scholar with Honor, and we had 27 Scholar with Distinction. So for a total of 86. The year before, we were 123. So we're still proud of the number of 86, but, you know, it's, it's there. I think it's something that we can aim for, and we can, we will probably raise it back up again. But we're still proud of our students for hanging in there and for earning the awards tonight, and have some that are here. So we will move into this part. Here we go. So this is just another snapshot. 48 Scholars' average was a 3.0. 12 Scholars with Honors, 3.63 average Scholar with Distinction, an average of 4.06. 26 overall AP Scholar average was a 3.49, which was a 3.5, if you round up, for 86 total. So what we'd like to do for our Scholars, AP Scholars, is we will call you down one at a time. If the person's not here, that's fine. We're still going to clap, because they deserve that recognition. And then if you're here, come down, and we'll hand you certificate, and maybe a fist pump is appropriate with COVID still. And then we will, we did our best. We were getting pizza at Forte, and we were going over the names, Mr. Stevenson, Ms. Albertson. So we think we have it down, and there's no tomato sauce on here, so that, that's good. That's a win. So what we'd like to do is, we're going to call Mr. Stevenson, I believe, to be, to be, kick us off here, and we'll take these certificates.
Yep. Good evening. I'm Glenn Stevenson. I'm the supervisor of STEM for Verona Public Schools. Thank you for having me tonight. Congratulations, everyone. I do want to give a tiny shout out to Mr. Wertz. I was frantically texting him, making sure that we got pronunciations of names correct this evening. So a little extra for Mr. Wertz. Viviana Anderson. Eden Bermeo. Sarah Boticchio. Emily Bosco. Grace Boucher. Gabriel Breitenbach. Nia Chesney. Byron Chu. Jasmine Cortez Ruiz. Jessica Day. Emma Dardurian. Christian Despeti. Ashley Duhaney. Stefano Faro. Julianne French. Olivia Gassen. Maya Goldieski. Alec Hampson. Paige Hensel. Alana Holton. Peter Hoogter. Andrew Hunt. Isabella Husar. Sophia Josephson. We've split the list. I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Albertson.
All right. We have Michael Costelin. Sean Maida. Ella Mathewson. Melanie Naris. Eleanor Newman. James Nicolai. Amelia Nishkalik. Bridget O'Donnell. William O'Donnell. Kayla Okafor. Nikhil Pareek. Emma Ramsalier. Harley Rena. Catherine Reminition. Maria Sarah. Erin Shumul. Lester Sheep. Stefan Spalski. Renas Walanti. Sebastian Vargas. Joseph Besson. Catherine Welsh. Griffin Willner. And Daniel Zamleut. And Daniel Zamlut. Moving over to Charlie.
Okay. So congratulations for our AP scholars. Next will be your AP scholar with honor. And again, it's granted to students who receive an average of at least 3.25 on all, all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. All right. So first off is Alec Breitenbach. Next is Kristen Brown. Amanda Caldera. Olivia Camudi. Leah Gardner. Anders Heiniger. Claire Jackson. Luke Lambert. Grace McKeown. Trevor Semerero, sorry, Trevor Semerero. My apologies. Fist pump for that one. And last is Giovanni Zerbini. Congratulations to all our AP scholar with honor. Our final 26 students, AP scholar with distinction. Again, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. So this would be, Ms. Albertson, please come back up.
All right, we have Karen Andre. Evan Banyan. Julia Capari. Harmony Chang. Abigail, Abigail Cleary. Kailin Campertio. Aiden Dyer. Rio Gagden. And Daphne Glader. All right, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Miller.
Sorry, a little lost handoff there. Okay. Carly Goldstein. Matey Gumasayak. Kara Johansson. Jack Lambert. Leila Marcelo Gomez. James McKeown. I wonder who's next. Jack McKeown. Audrey Ng. Benjamin Niesmer Tellney. And Alexander Rodner.
Sophia Saj. David Sidrak. Evan Sylvia. Veronica Valera. Sophia Vilani. Drew Weiser. Emily Nguyen. And finally, Annalee Ying.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Thank you, Ms. Albertson. That's click, click. Tech assistants, please. It's just one screen. That's okay. I can just see the list. Okay, the final, the final slide. Thank you, Mr. Bellage. Congratulations to all of our AP scholars. We want to thank you once again for your hard work. Congratulations once again. One thing I'd like to do, and normally we would take this to short recess. I'd like to try to get a group photo of the students who are here. If any members of the board like to join us, supervisors, if you'd like to. Yeah, we could probably do it in the lobby if that's okay with Dr. Fenari.
Sure. I just wanted to say a couple of words, all the parents and the students are here. Congratulations to each student for the dedication that you have, not only to your academics, but we as parents all understand that you're playing sports, you're in theater, you're in band, you have part-time jobs, you have obligations at your homes. It's impressive, really, really impressive. And you know, to speak to Dr. Miller's longevity of the program, my own kids were in school in 2009 at the high school when there were barriers to entry. And not only were there barriers to entry for AP courses, there was punitive things in place where as a parent, if you had a student who wanted that challenge and you overrode the recommendation, you were stuck with it. Like if you got into it and decided, you know what, this is harder than I thought and I want to switch into something else, you couldn't. So I think it's really impressive as a school district that we not only remove the barriers, let kids take and, and their families, because you have to really think about it and make a choice to go into an AP course because it is a lot of work. And once you do it and those barriers aren't there, I think the students really rise to the level of the challenge. And I applaud you all. It's fantastic. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Yeah, okay. Anybody like to join us for the photo?
Like, do you really want that?
Yeah, please. Yeah, it'd be nice. We'll go in the lobby. Okay. Okay. All right. So congratulations for our AP scholars. Next will be your AP scholar with honor. And again, it's granted to students who receive an average of at least 3.25 on all, all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. All right. So first off is Alec Breitenbach. Next is Kristen Brown. Amanda Caldera. Olivia Camudi. Leah Gardner. Andrea Banyan. Okay. So congratulations for our AP scholars. Next will be your AP scholar with honor. And again, it's granted to students who receive an average of at least 3.25 on all, all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. So this would be, Ms. Albertson, please come back up. Okay. So that was the AP scholars and kudos to them. And we do have a second presentation tonight. We have Ms. Verda Maloney from 45 Lemons presenting to us on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We partnered, we accepted a resolution last week to partner with 45 Lemons to help lead our district into our next level of growth and inclusion and equity for all our students. So Ms. Maloney and Dr. Miller, take it away. Thank you so much.
And can everyone hear me? Hi, everyone. It was a home, what am I looking?
There's a, there's a camera right here.
Oh, hi. Hi, everybody. Hello, everyone. I'm excited to be here. I got stopped by the train when I was coming and I'm just going to.
Yep, I'll just do the introduction. Are we back live, Elton? Okay, so that was the AP Scholars and kudos to them. And we do have a second presentation tonight. We have Ms. Verda Maloney from 45 Lemons presenting to us on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We partnered, we accepted a resolution last week to partner with 45 Lemons to help lead our district into our next level of growth and inclusion and equity for all our students. So Ms. Maloney and Dr. Miller, take it away. Thank you so much.
I go to... Right here. And pitch. And then I want to present. So this play from start. This low error. Perfect. And can everyone hear me? Hi, everyone. It was a home... There's a camera right here. Oh, hi. Hi, everybody. Hello, everyone. I'm excited to be here. I got stopped by the train when I was coming and I'm just going to share a little bit about who we are as 45 Lemons and then a little bit of what the first phase of this project and this collaboration will be like. I'm going to look here and here because it's very strange to not look at you all because you're here. So, this is a little bit about me and my co-founder. So this is just some of the places that we've worked collectively. And Nah and I actually met when we were 19 years old at James Madison University. That's where I went after I went to Mount Olive High School. So, some of you probably know that high school, I would think. And, so our backgrounds collided there. That's where we came together. I say that she's my best friend in this lifetime and every, but we went in different paths as far as work was concerned. And Nah went and worked in a lot of pharmaceutical companies, Glasgow Smith Klein, Quest Diagnostic, and doing lots of really big HR work. And I took the route of education, founded a charter school in the Bronx, an arts elementary school, one of the first and only in Hunts Point, and then went on to coach and train leaders. I first taught middle school. I have this theory, I don't know if you all believe it, we're in a high school, but that all the adults are basically some type of carbon copy of whatever age range that they teach. So, elementary teachers are kind of like elementary kids. Middle school teachers are kind of like middle school kids. And high school teachers are kind of like high school kids. That's my theory and I'm sticking with it. And so I was a middle school teacher. I love middle school. So that tells you a lot about all of the personalities that I can possess in one human being. And so, when I went to, when I taught, I realized that I just felt I didn't have like a big impact in the classroom and I wanted to study politics and education. And that's when I went to Teachers College and came back to the area. I taught in Fairfax, I mean, not in Fairfax, in PG County, Maryland, and then here in New York City and in the Bronx. And so, I then went on to coach leaders. I started my own school and so I worked with startup schools. And all the while, both Nah and I have had roots in diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's been called so many different things over the course of time. I like to say that we've always been in the business of helping organizations, schools, companies be less oppressive places, quite frankly. And so that's just a little bit of like how we kind of came together and we've been together ever since. And here's a little context about me. Is Dave here? Oh, okay. Well, his picture's here from high school. And, yes, it is. We went to high school together. And so, this image is just a little bit of context about me. I know. Yeah, you're welcome. And so, I grew up and was in a school, I went to school in Brooklyn until I was in second grade. And in second grade, my mom, my twin sister and I, we moved here, not far from here, we moved to Bud Lake. And was one of a handful of black students. And ended up graduating from Mount Olive High School. There were probably about 10 black students in this class of 208, about 10%-ish, right? And so, my lived experience is one that is actually pretty close to what some of the lived experience might be for students here, but also just like knowing the area. And Dave Galbichek and I graduated from high school together and I knew him as Galb. I don't know if he knows that. And, and I think it's been very fascinating and interesting that my path has kind of led me even back to working with schools that are similar to what I experienced as a child. And I think that what I'm excited about in partnering is that it doesn't matter how few or how many of any group of people exist somewhere, you can create a space that is inviting and safe. And part of this journey is just understanding more of what's happening for young people, what's happening for your staff, what's happening for your families here in Verona, and what that means for creating a space that's safe, welcoming, where children, most importantly, can be their full authentic selves and where diversity, equity, and inclusion are something that's like at the forefront. You all have already started this path, so it's kind of nice to not going into a place where it's I have to potentially convince folks that they have to come here. But my work has taken me to places where I've had to convince. I'll share a little bit more about other places that I've done similar work. And so the first phase is really evaluation and assessment. So, we had a lot of conversations with Charles, with the team, kind of about where you find yourselves right now and some of the stuff that you've done in the past, I want to say a year and a half, right? We all had a moment in March of 2020 where there was the continuation, I would say, of this journey, struggle, fight for freedom. But we were all inside. And we were all in a moment where we could not necessarily escape this conversation, right? And so, I think that a lot of people made statements, a lot of people were like, "We have to do something." Running, rushing, rushing, rushing. And then now it's like, okay, the dust is settled. And now it's about like, what are the actions that we could do? How do we go beyond statements? How do we go beyond being like, you know, looking at what's happening on a screen, but also making it, connecting it to the reality that what it means to just like live every day? And so, we will go through a process in the first phase is just to co-design. Like, what are the questions that you want to answer? What are the things that you're looking for? And then just asking questions, right? Like, really just bringing together, I mean, we want to get to about 5 to 10% of the population, right? Because that's statistically, you need no more than 10% to kind of get a sense of what everyone's feeling, right? And like, what's going on everywhere? And so, conduct that assessment and make recommendations. What should you do? And I would say that, I said this, I think, when we, when we all met, it's not a marathon and it's not a sprint. We're doing a really, really, really fast 800. And so, that means that we need to be mindful of like, we have to actually, you know, it's not, it's not one or the other. It's not, shouldn't take us forever to kind of make statements about what we believe. What are, how do you even define diversity, equity, and inclusion? And what will that look like for a kindergartner? What will that look like for someone who's about to go into seventh or eighth grade? And what will that look like for a graduate who's about to go out into the world? So, the process that we go through, it's not, I don't think it's, this is not the rocket science part of it. I think that the special sauce is me and Nah. We collect the data room. We ask you just to give us information. What, if we were to just, you know, drive down the street and like pull up in the parking lot and say, "Hey, maybe we want to live here", what would you say it's like, right? So, we're going to collect some information about curriculum, about your statements, and anything that you think will tell us a little bit the story of Verona. Then we'll conduct some focus groups. And so, we will center the experiences of those that the system historically marginalizes, right? So, Black Indigenous folks of color, and this is across all demographics. So, this is from young to older. It's from students to parents to faculty. And just ask questions and see what trends arise. One of the things that we have found, people think they know what the answer is, but they think they know that without having asked people. And so, that's where, and I think that was a pause that you all like deliberately, we're like, "Wait a minute. Okay, we're doing some things. We feel strongly convicted behind this. And are we actually asking the right questions and talking to the right people to get this information?" And then for those that we can't catch, we'll do surveys. So first, we do the focus groups and see what kind of comes up and then determine like, okay, we're going to survey a certain segment to get some more information. And those focus groups will also include whether it's the parents that have been on committees or whether it's your own staff that have been committee members that have been actually already doing this work, as well as those that maybe have it. It's going to be, you know, people that maybe don't, don't, "Why do we have to talk about this at school?" When I was growing up, we just all got along. Bottom line is like, that's what you think. And, and you know, as someone who went to school as one of very few, I don't think that everyone realizes what that experience is like for those that are very, that are not in the majority. And this is like raising that up and then deciding, well, what are we going to do about it? And then just to find a report with recommendations. We'll then present you all with a report and say, "This is what we found. This is what we, these are the trends that we see. How does this resonate? How does it not resonate?" And then say what we think should be the next steps. And, these are just some of the places that we've worked. All over. So this is from Oakland to small schools in Des Moines to Denver Public Schools. Like, we've worked in a lot of different school districts. I have, I actually led a lot of the work in the New York City Department of Ed around their anti-bias training, which was very controversial and very like, woo, but now it seems like nothing. It's like a cakewalk compared to where we see ourselves now. But did a lot of that work as well. And so, yeah, and that's it, honestly. And I want to open it up for any questions that you all might have about the path, but that's it. That's my fancy, fancy schmancy PowerPoint. I have this goal in life to only have like three slides. Because what are we doing when we have like 29 slides, right? You're just like, "Are you kidding me right now, okay? Are you kidding me right now?" Trying to whittle it down and just kind of get to the meat of it. Wait, what happened? What did I miss? Did you have a big slideshow? Okay. Um, yeah, and so, so I actually honestly want to just open it up for any questions that you all might have, right? And, yeah. Should we go back to the mic and post questions here? So we're opening a list. How many slides did you have?
Well, we're spending a lot of data.
So you presented a lot of data.
I'll stop sharing. Escape and show and... Yeah, thank you.
Verda, thank you for your few slides, but wealth of information. Your positive energy, I feel energized already on this. And I do believe some of the board members might have some questions or comments from you. So I'm going to leave it to them.
I cannot read what those name tags say, so definitely say your name.
Ms. Maloney, thank you so much for coming out. My name is Sarah Drappi. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Education. I, for one, am particularly excited to bring you aboard. Dr. Miller sings your praises whenever he can and I now share those praises. Thank you so much for your presentation. I guess one of the biggest concerns that I have is coming off of the original committee that we had. So I guess this is a twofold question is, what are your thoughts on making sure that that original committee that we started with is included in going forward? And then, I guess, conversely would be, how do we make sure that we pull in members of the community who don't believe that this is necessary? And I would say, at the same time, don't believe that this is something that we should be bringing into the school system?
Yeah. So, the first is, one, some of those committee members were part of the conversations of even to get to what this Phase 1 would look like, right? So, there's a lot of things that we, we offer as a, as a company and so, they helped to get us here. The other thing is that the focus groups, one of the first ones will be with those committees to kind of talk to them about what they believe are, just what their experience has been. And also, where do they want to see the work go? And what, you know, I don't know all of the questions, but we'll be involving them in specific focus groups that are kind of geared towards the fact that they have started this work. In addition to focus groups, that's just like, hey, give us your middle school parents. Give us your elementary school parents or teachers that want to come in as well. And I think that what we'll have to do is, once we get to the recommendation phase, is really figure out where do you want to go with this committee structure, right? So I think that the best thing is to just say that it's on a pause right now, right? As we gather more data, but I can't say, I can't answer right now whether or not that committee structure will be what we recommend or not. But I can say that we will involve those, those individuals in, in kind of unique ways as we collect the, the information right now. Is that helpful? And then the second part of the question is, the second question was around people that just don't believe that this is work that should be happening. And honestly, I am not in the practice of, of like convincing anyone that my humanity or the humanity of those that if we don't do this work, that are, that are most impacted, is something that I have to prove is worthy of said work, right? So, there are going to be people that don't agree. And when Nah and I come into places, we're just like, "Are you ready for that?" And that was part of the conversation, like, we know that and you've already experienced it, right? I think that part of the recommendation and part of the work that we do is around understanding people's stories. That's part of why we're doing focus groups, so that we can get to this place of being able to have critical conversations about this. And that's just the bottom line. I think that you all, as Verona schools, have decided that diversity, equity, and inclusion is important to us. And that's the bottom line. And so, that then is where we, that's how we move forward. And some of the work moving forward could be around helping you on how to share with people that say like, "I don't believe this should be happening." Well, what's a response to that, right? Like, and some responses to that is if we're going to be proud of our country, then we also have to claim and understand the things that we've done have not been great. You can't have it both ways. You can't have like, "Yes, I'm so like proud. Yeah, great, you're proud." And also, you have to acknowledge our history so that we don't repeat it. And I think some of it is just being able to build the muscle of having those conversations. And I think quite honestly, in these moments, it is around, there are people that may not want to be on the boat. And this is a moment to make that, you know, to make that decision. And I think it's about standing up for what's right. And the center of all of this, for me, are the young people. This is a school. And so, sometimes adults get really, really caught up in what they believe and what they don't want to have happen and all those things. And I guarantee you, if you talk to their children, 98% of the time, their children want them to stop saying that and so that we can move forward. So that's also why our focus groups include young people. This is not just about what the adults want. And so, I think it's a, it's going to be a journey. There's no one set answer for it, but I'm very committed to like, yes, I'm willing to have the conversation as long as it is not impede anyone's right to exist and just be their authentic selves, including those that disagree. I'm not saying that we're like, not here to hear that. At the end of the day, I believe that there's right and there's wrong. And there's some things that are just the right thing to do. And it might not be the easy thing to do, but it is the right thing to do. Thanks for your questions, Sarah. Anyone else?
Excellent. Thank you. Other board members, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I, I'm very excited to get started with this. It seems like your plan and the way your organization works really tailors everything to each individual community. Because it, you know, every community approaches this differently. And the, the people in the community have their own opinions. And I'm, I'm really excited to, to figure out exactly how we in Verona can do it, our community. And, you know, and solve some of the issues we're having. And I, I think it's fantastic that you're, you're not coming in with just like a cookie cutter, like, here's what we're going to do thing. You're really going to gather the data and figure it out. I, I, I like that approach. I think I'm really excited to get started with it.
Yeah.
We're very happy to have you onboard.
Thanks. I'm happy to be onboard. It's really important to us because, and like I said, the list of all the schools that I've shown started in lots of different places, right? Some started right here, was like, and we had to little, we've had to tell people, they're like, "Oh, like, yeah, this is what we want to do." We're like, "You're so not ready for that." Like, we need to like, actually, we don't even know why you're doing that or what, or what have you. So, we try as much as possible. There are some things that are just similar as far as a process. But yeah, we want it to be about you, not about, also not about what we quote unquote "think" is the answer. So, I appreciate that. And you might not like everything that we say. We always say that too. We're like, part of our name, 45 Lemons, is twofold. One, we were like officially 45 when we were like, "This is what we're going to do." And then the other thing is like lemons, you can have lemonade, we can make it sweet for you. Could be really tired, just put it in some water. People do that every morning. And it's like, ooh, but it like cleans your system out, you know? So lemons can come to you however you want. We, and however you need, not necessarily how you want it, but how you might need it at the time. So, you're not always going to love what we have to say. But I think that it's really important to know that we are always coming from a place of, of justice and love. Like, my motto in life is, "I'm all love with appropriate doses of rage." Because if you're not angry about things, then what are we doing? And then you channel that appropriately, right? But it's all love.
I would just like to add, I'm Pam Prisco. Thank you so much for your presentation and your positive vibe. Just coming off and listening to your presentation was fantastic. So, I'm looking forward to you coming to our district and working with our students and staff and our community. So, thank you very much for your presentations. And like you said, lemons, you know, can make lemonade. So, you know, when you get lemon handed to you, it can make lemonade. So it's all the positive vibes that really could change the world. So, thank you.
Exactly. It can make lemon chella, it can make lemon drops. You can have it any way we want. There's a whole bunch of things you can do with lemons, as long as you're 21 or older.
Just want to say welcome. This is Jim Day. And I also want to thank you for bringing the picture of David Galbichek on the screen. I know, I know people taking pictures of it. They were going to put posters out of it, so...
He's going to like hate me forever, but I was like, you know, I think it's, it's, it was so, like I said, it's like a weird kind of full circle type of thing when you like, you know, someone that you went to high school with and they're like, wow. So...
Do it. That's for Charlie bringing you in, right, Mr. Miller?
That is my, my gift. I've come bearing gifts today. And one is that photograph of high school, David Galbichek.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that a good, is that a good thing? You can borrow mine. You can borrow mine.
Awesome. All right, if nobody else has anything, thank you again so much for making it out here in person. And, uh, we wait for our next steps.
I'm glad that we're able to be in person, cause I think so, like, that's kind of been something I've missed a lot, like seeing people and getting their energy. Cause the Zoom is like, hi Zoom people, sorry, hi Zoom people, but Zoom is so.
Exactly. We're, we're definitely loving the in-person and the back to people and connections. So thank you.
I'm gonna need to, I don't want to just pull the jump drive out of there, so, thanks.
Much again. So that's really exciting. I am very happy with that. So we're gonna continue down our regular agenda. And next up, we have the superintendent report by Dr. Fernari.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to once again congratulate, I know they're gone, but I have to say it one more time, congratulate all of our AP scholars and their families on this tremendous achievement. Students, your academic efforts are a testament to your determination and quest for knowledge. Thank you to all of our teachers and administrators who provide learning opportunities for our students in support of their academic, social, and emotional growth. Thank you all, so to Verta and her partner Nah, who will be joining us the next time we see them, uh, for their presentation. This project will help the Verona Public Schools to continue our work toward the achievement of goals and strategies identified in our strategic plan, specifically concerning diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is our hope that this introspective work with 45 Lemons will support our desire to grow, upholding a healthy and respectful school culture consistent with our core values, where our words and actions include creating a sense of belonging through dignity and respect. I've had the opportunity to visit some of our schools and will continue to do so in the coming weeks and months. During one visit, students were asked by their principal to tell me a few facts about their school that they thought someone new to Verona should know. I was told by these elementary students that Verona teachers are the best. That there is a beautiful garden with a special tree at their school and that everyone does their best to help those who are new. Students and teachers have been engaged in many exciting learning activities, including Thanksgiving feasts that are planned for this week. I'd like to remind all of our staff, students, and families that November 24th through November 28th is a homework-free weekend. This means that during this time, there will be no homework, no projects to complete, and no assessments to study for. As we head into a time of Thanksgiving, it is my sincerest hope that our entire community finds time to rest, reflect, and rejuvenate. And I wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving with your families.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fernari. Does anybody have any questions or comments to add for Dr. Fernari? No? Okay, so thank you for that. I'm glad that you're off to a good start and you have the opportunity to meet the principals and see around the schools and start interacting with the students. That's great. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, Mr. Cruz and the Business Administrators Report.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. I have, uh, three updates, um, on the, uh, Business Administrator Report tonight. Over the last two months, we've engaged with all stakeholders regarding the Verona's, um, regarding Verona's participation in the National School Lunch Program. We've also surveyed, uh, the parents of the community overall. 389 parents participated in the survey, of which 53% voted in favor of the National School Lunch Program. And 47% against it. Uh, when we aggregated the data, 61% of, uh, Verona High School families were not in favor of the National School Lunch Program, which was in line with the students' voice, um, at the Verona High School Student Council. At this time, um, there are some challenges with the program, uh, stemming from supply chain issues, staffing, and even partnering with a district that will be willing to take on the reporting requirements along with the initial costs in the USDA consolidation agreement. Because of this, and the fact that we're not benefiting at this time from the reimbursable dollars, I'm recommending that we keep our lunch program as is for the remainder of the 2021, 22 school year. The Business Office will revisit and assess the National School Lunch Program. Thank you. And the financial incentives, uh, being offered, uh, by the federal government at the time. I also want to confirm that we currently have 24 students who applied for free and reduced lunch and are receiving, uh, free lunch. Our free lunch students also receive the same benefits offered by the National School Lunch Program, just such as the, uh, AP Exam Waiver. Uh, the Business Office, uh, will also work with our schools to ensure that proper outreach is conducted to reach families in need, uh, provide a, uh, an easy-to-use online application and access to, uh, applications in their home language. Uh, on the, uh, addendum resolution tonight, uh, is the approval of Hutchinson County Educational Service Commission to go out for a request for quote, for the least purchasing financing in the amount of, uh, $264,905.32. This, uh, this request for quote is for two buses and, and 42 computers. We currently have two buses that will be reaching their end of life under the New Jersey law. One bus is a 24-passenger, uh, bus for our, uh, special education transportation. And the other is a large 54-passenger bus that's used for athletics and field trips. Uh, the computers will be, um, being replaced, uh, are for a lab at the Verona High School. And it's also gonna cover computers that are gonna be needed for our new gaming club. Uh, the cost for the small bus is approximately, uh, $57,000. And the cost for the large bus is approximately $100,000, uh, followed by $106,000 for the, for the computer purchases. Lastly, uh, as Mr. Day reported and, and Ms., and Ms. Prisco reported last, um, at the last meeting, the, the Verona, uh, the VEA, uh, Verona Educators Association ratified their memorandum of agreement and salary guides, uh, earlier this month for the 2021, 24, um, MOA. Uh, thank you for, uh, thank you to everyone involved on both sides, um, to come to this agreement. Uh, it is on the agenda for board approval tonight. Uh, my team and I have worked diligently to prepare for these payroll updates. If approved, the new salaries will be reflected in the November 30th payroll. Retroactive pay will follow in December's payroll. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Cruz on the VA report? No?
I had a quick question, question, Mr. Cruz, um, regarding the, uh, the National Lunch Program. With, I guess, we go through this calendar year and then potentially in June or July, we would start looking at if they're gonna extend the program. Cause right now, we don't even know if they're gonna extend the program into the next year. So is, is there a timeframe that they've given you as a potential or any indication about it continuing into next year?
So there's just rumors at this point, there's, um, nothing has been, uh, really confirmed, um, by, uh, the federal government or, or even at the state level. Uh, so, so right now, at the county level, we, we are anticipating some type of announcements, probably, uh, late winter. But we normally, it'll probably, we'll know by March. So, so around that timeframe, we, we could actually assess them. And if, if they do extend it, then that'll be an opportunity for us to apply to, into a program and, and benefit from the reimbursements.
Thank you very much for that. And thank you for all your analysis of, uh, you know, getting the data and getting, doing that survey and, uh, providing your recommendation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm glad to see that the outreach is working and that we have been able to include more students and enroll more students into our program. Um, and, um, I know in committee, you had mentioned that that work will continue, you know, reaching out to, um, folks in the community who have connections with families who may, um, have still not applied and, and should apply. Um, and getting that information out as well to, um, local faith organizations who also have connections with families in need. And I, you know, thank you for all that work. I know, um, you kind of hit the ground running with it, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
If there's no other questions for Mr. Cruz, we're gonna move on to our committee reports. We have athletics and co-curricular.
Thank you, Mrs. Freshy. I'll speak on this. Um, we did meet on November 15th. It was very brief though, because we are going to be meeting again on December 1st. We have, all the fall sports have finished and the wrap-up will be on the next meeting. We'll report out on that, um, as well. And the only thing, there is a field trip coming up on December 9th for the French Drama Club to the Majestic Theater in New York City. That'll be on December 9th. And then personnel, we do have, um, the head boys' winter track coach on for tonight and the assistant swim coach, as well as a substitute nurse. And that's all I have to say.
Are there any questions or comments, uh, for Mrs. Prisco? If not, thank you, Mrs. Prisco. And did, uh, education, special education meet as well?
Yeah, we did. I, I'll take that. Um, so we have two policies that are having their first reading tonight. Uh, the first is a safety plan for healthcare settings in school buildings. It's related to COVID. It's a mandatory new policy. So the first readings tonight, um, and the other one, the sexual harassment of students, these are both, uh, mandatory ones that we have to, to go over. Um, we discussed the AP, uh, scholars who we got to see, uh, this evening that were so impressive. We talked about those, uh, all of those impressive students. Uh, we talked about 45 Lemons, the presentation that we just saw. We are able, this is exciting, we're hiring a, an elementary math coach. We've kind of been wanting to do this for a while. And, uh, we're gonna use the, the Learning Accelerated Coach and Educator Grant from the, uh, which is, uh, under the ARP SIR, uh, funds. Interviews are going on right now. I'm sure we'll have an update about that soon. Um, but that's an exciting addition to the, to the district. Uh, we are also approving tonight, uh, up for approval, I should say, is a change to the elementary report cards. Um, just a couple tweaks to the, the format. It's nothing, nothing too crazy. We're taking out the, uh, identifying the, the reading level of each student and changing, uh, moving where it says reads at grade level. It's kind of some format changes, but nothing, nothing too crazy. Uh, map growth assessments, uh, have been administered at the elementary schools in October and at HBW, uh, in early November. Those results are gonna go out soon, um, and they'll be compared to, um, they're gonna take them again and compare them for growth. And that's, uh, it's a great, uh, assessment to kind of see where we are and how we're, we're growing throughout the year. Um, so we're looking forward to that one. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, being evaluated by CUSAC. All the paperwork was sent in early November and we're waiting, uh, for the, uh, evaluation to continue. Um, let's see, we're in the middle of first round observations of all staff. Um, these observations, the first round are announced and they include a pre and post conference. So that's all going on right now. Math professional development with, uh, Bill Jackson and Glenn Stevenson occurred, uh, November 11th and, uh, November 22nd. A new teacher academy, uh, will meet again in December, on December 2nd. And let me see if there's anything else. Uh, we are, oh, we are starting a, uh, uh, strategic gaming club at the high school. This is kind of cool. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you could describe the, the club a little bit better, but it's kind of a... Yeah, it's really, really cool.
Sure. So, uh, I think I'm, I think I'm on. So what it is, is, uh, Mr. Cal, he's our physics teacher. He started this, uh, strategic gaming club. And, uh, through the support of our business office, we're able to get some high-powered machines. And it, it's, there are, out of many school districts in the state, there are lots of kids that are like in this league. So it's called esports league, and they play these different games. One is called Super Smash Brothers. Another game is called Overwatch. And there's one other game, but they play, what is it? Rocket League. And Mr. Allworth loves that game. And, uh, so the kids, it's like playing a sport, but it's an esports. So it's really neat. And they have this whole super conference. We're a part of that for Essex, we're one with Melbourne and a few other schools. But it goes far south as Cape May, as far north as High Point. So there are a lot of teams that play. And they play from, in this case, we're gonna use our Makerspace and our Learning Commons where the students will play. And it's just another, you know, another form of entertainment that like, you know, as a kid, I loved Nintendo, but gaming has come a long way since then. And this fits, this fits for some of our students. And to be honest with you, if they study, if they work with this and they can get into gaming, they can have successful careers when they graduate Verona High School and go to university and then go beyond. So it's a really cool experience. I'm jealous that, you know, I'm a little bit older now, but I would have been need to do that as a kid. I would have loved to have done that, but the technology wasn't there when we were kids. But for them to have this opportunity and for us to be able to support our students with Mr. Cal is just, we can't thank everyone on the board enough.
I, I just, are you guys, I just wanted to add to that a little bit, you know? In Ed Committee, the last couple Ed Committees, and I reported out of this at the last meeting, and I think even the one before that, we've been talking a lot about looking at our curriculum overall from an equity standpoint. I think evidenced by our AP scholars tonight, um, something that has come up frequently is also looking at opportunities for students who don't want to take AP classes, where AP classes are not accessible for them. And what happens to them after they graduate. But I think this is one of those opportunities. So, I mean, these may be students in AP, who knows? But this is an opportunity for students where sports is not their fit, theater, music, not their fit, or maybe it is. And it's just another opportunity for students to find their niche. But I think it's interesting too, is that when you research the games that are being played, they're all about collaboration and leadership. And in these games, you don't have one leader. Everybody takes a turn being a leader, and that's this big collaboration piece where you may be a leader. And then you may say, look, I see an entrance over there. You go for it and we'll follow behind you. And being able to be fluid like that is, is it, is like such a necessary soft skill in the workplace. That I think this is a huge opportunity for these kids, and I'm, I'm, I think it's great. Another thing I wanted to add was just about the report cards that we were talking about. The reason, um, they removed the reading letter assessment is because when students are leveled into say like an R, they're really reading at a QRS. There's really a band of letters that they're reading within. And I think when a lot of schools sort of picked up reading and rating workshop, they kind of got sucked into this, oh, this is my letter, so this is where I live. But it's just not true. And I think we have found that through professional development. So that was the reason they removed that letter, because it's an identifier rather than looking at it as a scope.
Thank you for the education report. And we also had finance committee meet as well. Sorry, you want to take that?
Uh, Mr. Cruz went over, um, most of our agenda, National School Lunch Program and, um, the RFQ for the financing for the computers and the buses. Two other things we talked about was the budget calendar. Um, and that if it has not been posted, will be posted by tomorrow. I believe it's already up there on the website. Um, and that is, I'm looking at, is that on here on the agenda? Is that something we have to approve or not? It is, yeah, right? I was just looking, I was just wanted to attach it to our, um, our agenda. What resolution is that? Sorry. So I was looking for before, 22? Yes, here it is, 22. So it says tentative calendar, because it is subject to change based on when we get all of our information as the budget process goes through. And, um, the, we talked about our, um, the meeting dates too. We are approving, um, let's see, approving our meeting dates for... let's see, approving our meeting dates for 2022 into January 2023. And that was, was that number six? Yes, that's resolution number six. So our reorganization meeting will be January 4th. And then the meetings are also on the website going forward. Another thing that we talked about in finance was I had the opportunity to attend my mandatory training for my second year, and that was Governance II for Finance. And something that they suggested, the NJSBA suggested, was that every few years, especially if there's been some turnover on the board, that the BA conduct a sort of Finance 101 workshop. Even if the board members have been there a while, it's good to sort of brush up on what do the reports look like every month? What should you be looking for? How do you do the finance paperwork? And considering we're moving our system over now to a new system, and the reports will look different, Mr. Cruz thought that that would be important to do, and we're going to try and schedule that for some time in February, once we get our new board member on and get our feet underneath us and start rolling along. So, and that's all.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to finance? And then lastly, community resources. Matt, do you want to go with that, Mr. Day? And then I could add on, I'll fill in.
First, I want to thank Dr. Fornari for, when she did this report, it's the larger font, so I can actually see it without my glasses this time. So I appreciate that. The first item on our agenda for our discussion was about the candidates night, the candidates forum. I believe Mrs. Prisco had provided some feedback last meeting. And so there were some conversations basically with the SEAs and the organizers of the candidates forum, just providing him some additional feedback about the questions, sort of how they were derived, how they were selected, and about the format. And now we have elections coming up every year regarding board members. We want to make sure that we're able to provide them some feedback about what we were told, maybe make some adjustments going into the next candidates forum for the next election. Next item was talking about the 45 Lemons, what they presented tonight. So thank you very much for that. I believe it was a very exciting to see their, the information they're providing and where they're heading and what they're going to do for our district. We also had an update from HYA regarding the superintendent search. Really, just preliminary discussions about some of the feedback of their data gathering, feedback of the analysis that they're, they're starting to do that will eventually be put out to the public. And just talk a little bit about the superintendent characteristics that we're looking for. So it was a nice conversation with HYA to get that update. We also, as part of the committee meeting, we talked about what Mrs. Trappi's doing regarding the, putting a presentation together that we potentially could add to our website regarding the roles and responsibilities of board members. I see sometimes a little confusion about what the board members do versus what the administration does. So we'd like to be able to put that up on the website and be able to, just a little tutorial about the roles of the Board of Education. Also, we talked about our communication methods. I know Dr. Fornari is getting very involved with our Friday folder, our email blast, and social media, and all the kind of fun things that we're doing. And I know she was able to get LT on, Mr. Bellage, to update her superintendent's page. So I'm sure it's a wonderful, I don't think I took a peek at it, it was a wonderful page. So glad to have you on our website now. And we'll continue to update the website and make improvements on that. And then Dr. Fornari mentioned in her report about all the things she's doing. She's jumping in headfirst into, you know, of course, well, she worked with Dr. Dinesio as a bit of a transition. And now she's been meeting all the staff and members and going to all the schools and talking to the parents and then interrogating the elementary school kids with questions, trying to, trying to get feedback from them, which is great, because those are the best, those are the best people to get answers from about our district. So, and I know, I know you're also, you've reached out, you know, reaching out to the, you know, police and the VEA leadership. So I think that's great. And I did talk about, I think one of the things we talked about also was getting involved with the realtors in town. So I reached out to a local realtor, got some feedbacks. I'll provide that to you later. But really, you know, are the schools, strong schools make strong, make, make your town stronger and helps you when it comes to people that want to move to your district. And so we always tout how important it is to have a strong school system to make your town very desirable. And we have a great district now. We want to make it better, continue to move it forward. And again, we want to be able to educate those realtors out there about how to talk about our schools and what we do for our students, what we do for the people that live in this town. And I think anything else to add, Mrs. Fresh?
The only thing, I'm just going to add a little bit more color to what Mrs. Trappi's doing with the roles and responsibilities, once we get that presentation up and going. I did reach out and sent an email to the SCA president and Mrs. Curran, who's the president of the Conference of SEAs, with the contact information for Mr. Ray Penny of New Jersey School Boards Association, because he, as part of our dues, they do do presentations to parents and partner with organizations within the community. So I put that out to all the SEAs, and Mr. Penny actually does an interactive presentation for parents on what board members do and the different roles of our administrators, of our teachers, of chain of command. Because I think that is something that all of us, one, as board members, we're constantly going for retraining on that. And I think the more the public understands that, the better it is. And next November, we are going to have two more seats up. And I feel the, the better educated our public is, it will encourage people to maybe run and become part of the board and have, you know, we are going into a rebuilding phase. And I'm going to piggyback that onto the HYA stuff, because a lot of the communication piece, we've had focus groups and surveys that went out. And briefly, what we talked about in confidential, without getting into too many details, was HYA, and they're putting together all the data that they collected from all these focus groups and surveys. And collectively, they met with 145 individuals in focus groups in an interview setting and larger group settings. And with the surveys added in, they completed 343 stakeholder surveys. So there's a lot of information and communication absolutely was a theme that came through. And everybody sitting up here is dedicated into improving that and getting our, our methods and our message and moving that forward in a very positive direction. So that's really all I wanted to add. And in regard to the superintendent search, they are going, Mr. Bill Adams and Monica Brown are going to compile all of the information that they spoke to us about in detail in confidential. They're going to compile that into a report that we will be able to upload to our website. So as soon as they get us the PDF versions, it should be tomorrow or no later than Wednesday. It should be up on our website, and that'll be for the public to look through. And that's going to be the basis of our search. When we start doing recruiting and interviewing, everything is going to come back to all that stakeholder information that we got. And it was teachers, it was administrators, it was our town government leaders, it was board members, it was students. A lot of students participated at the middle school and high school. And that student voice, the way it was very important with our lunch program, is also important, because what the adults want and what the students need are sometimes very different. So we do, we're very thankful to have that voice incorporated into that. And lastly, Sarah and I reached out to our newly elected board member, Mr. Waka, and we're going to informally meet with him at some point in December, just so we have a really smooth transition come January for his installation and our reorganization meeting. And other than that, I think we're good. Does anybody have any questions on that?
One point of clarification, it was mentioned before in one of the prior reports, that we were going to have two policies on for a first reading this evening. And we actually, Mr. Miller and some of the other folks in our office met this morning to go through some of the aspects of that that we had discussed, and we needed more clarification. As a result, we pulled those from first reading, because we wanted to consult both with our attorney and with the county office for some clarifying points. We will bring that back to committee so that we can have the first reading in a future meeting.
So those are already pulled?
They're already.
They're already pulled. Okay, great. Thank you. And if there are no other questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify, just to make it clear, that the leadership profile that's going up, hopefully tomorrow, if not Wednesday, from HYA, is really a collaborative effort between the community and the administration and the staff and the students and the board. And I, I think, you know, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to seeing that up there, and I'm looking forward to sort of getting some feedback as well. I think the community in particular will see a lot of what they discuss, strengths and challenges and characteristics represented in there. So I'm looking forward to that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And at this point, we're going to open up to public comments on agenda action items. And just please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. Denise Frizzella, 130 Personette Avenue. I am speaking on resolution number eight, which is the elementary school report card. Although it's been commented that is a change in format, it's really not changing much. That letter that parents get regarding their child's reading level, although it is not a complete view of a child reading level, you can never put a child's, what they can do and can't do in a, in a letter. I agree with that. But the district has chosen to go with read and write as their method of teaching children to read in Verona. They have gone with Fontis and Pennell as their method of assessing children's reading. Parents don't get regular systematic reports as to how their children are reading and what level they are reading and how they are advancing, except through their report card, unless they know enough, unless the parent knows enough to ask the teacher. Now, if you're a parent who, your first child, you don't know much about education, you're trusting your school district to do the right thing. If you don't know enough to ask questions of your teachers, then all you get is that letter. And when your child is reading six months behind, one year behind, two years behind, you need to be able to know to ask questions. So although it may just be a letter or a format change, or whatever you want to call it, to a parent, it's an important data point. And one of the few data points that maybe would spark a conversation. You know, we talk about communication. We had a, Ms. Freshy just talked about communication and how important it is. This is a method of communication. It's a method of communicating to a parent how their child is doing relative to other children, and how they're doing, progressing relative to themselves over the course of a year. So to take that one data point away from a parent who may not know enough to ask for that data point, I think it's wrong. I don't think it should be removed. If you are going to remove it, I think you should look at the entire system of how you are teaching children to read, because I can tell you it doesn't help children with dyslexia. We can, we could have a whole conversation about how read and write is horrible for children with dyslexia. But this is about a data point that you're removing for parents. So that's really my only comment. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. And the right person is sitting in the room to hear them. So, Mr. Miller.
Just to address your question, we used to have, it was on the third page, it was, over here, so I can look at you. Am I still on? Okay. We removed it from the third page. We put it on the first page underneath reading, and it says student reads independently at grade level. And we have one, two, three, and four. So, I'm not, I'm not finished, though, but I, three means that are at grade level. Ms. Albertson, who is our new humanities supervisor, is working with our teachers on discussion about grade level bands, because that's really what exists. It's not just one letter. It's like within three, when students read. When we have our parent conferences in December, that will be discussed with parents. And moving forward, we're beginning in December, working with our Curriculum Council on just revamping our report cards so that it includes some of the things that you're saying, but like overall, there will be a rubric for everything from reading to mathematics to science. It will take time. We're going to develop it this year. We also are using MAP, or MAP Growth Assessments. They, they record what's called a Lexile level. So that's more information that we can share with parents. And I'm sure if there's ever a question, a parent can always reach out to their teacher, and the teacher will gladly discuss what their instructional level versus what their independent level is. So I understand what you're saying, but it, the grade level band, I think, a more important topic, and we're looking at, looking at ideas like that as we move forward. So it's not that we're just dropping it. We thought it'd be more appropriate putting it underneath reading and to a parent to see, well, if they have a three, it means that they're, they're just in the right spot. And the way that we have the rubric set up for our teachers, it's based upon, like, you know, the, the three trimesters. Like, so what's, what's the, where would the grade level student be in December versus, you know, March versus June? And these conversations will definitely occur with our parent conferences. So we feel that it is the right call and that we're going to continue to work and develop our elementary report card for board adoption by June. That will be completely revamped to reflect also what we're doing with science and social studies.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for responding. Did it stop? Is this good? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So thank, thank you, Mr. Miller. Next on the agenda is any discussion items of older new business. Does anybody have anything? So we are going to move on to the roll call of our resolutions. And I need a motion to accept resolutions number one through 24.
To move.
Moved by Mrs. Trappi, second by Mr. Day. And is there any discussion?
I just, sorry, I have something I want to add, Mrs. Freshy, if you don't mind.
Nope.
On 2.3, the resignation, I just want to bring it out to, first, talk about Angela Salisbury, her resignation as leaving Verona High School for 20 years. To me, this hits really hard, because I'm, I've had my, both of my boys had her. She's a fantastic teacher. She does amazing things with our students here at the high school. So when they say that people can be replaced, I'm really, I don't know if she can be replaced, because she, she has tough shoes to fill, because she does amazing things here. She will truly be missed here. And what she did with our capstone program for our seniors is just amazing, unbelievable work she has done. And the care that she's had for all the students, whether they want to go off to college or not, she really works hard for them, and she really wanted to try to bring the work-study program back. So maybe that's something we could look forward to in the future for our students that are not, you know, so inclined to go to college afterwards. But I wish her the best. She will truly, truly be missed. It was very hard for me to read that, that she was leaving. So Angela, you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Prisco. And I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback on that. When I was a paraprofessional and I did work at the high school, I had the opportunity to work in Mrs. Salisbury's class with her, and I saw firsthand the work that she did. And I, too, want to wish her good luck in her next career move. And she does leave big shoes to fill. So thank you, Mrs. Salisbury. Thank you for bringing that up, Pam. Are there any other discussions on resolutions?
I would just like to say how excited I am that HBW is doing a musical again. I feel like that is a big return to normal. From what I hear from my middle schooler is that they were told that this is the largest group of students to ever audition for a show at HB. So they have their hands full, and best of luck to them. And I'm so excited to see it. And I also wanted to come back to resolution number eight and just get some clarification, Dr. Miller. This decision to change, this was not your decision alone. This wasn't something that you walked in and said, "This is the decision we're making." Can you explain how this?
Can you explain how this decision was made?
Sure.
Resolution number nine, just to clarify. Is it number nine? My copy says number nine.
Mine says eight. This is the one I took from out there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so maybe this is the updated, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah.
So about the elementary report cards?
Yes.
Yeah, so a couple of items came up. One was about the Fontis and Pennell level and where we designate one letter. For years, to be truthful, teachers were kind of uncomfortable with one spot because sometimes we would, they would work with students on a DRA in September. And when they fill out their report card, like they, they use like a running record to speak generally to, to track the students. But they didn't feel, it was like, they're also careful of the label that it gives students. Like when I speak with like Ms. Walker, for example, or Ms. Frida at their libraries at the elementary, they're not leveled at all. So it's important that we know where their reading, their instructional independent level is. But it's also, we want students to chase the books that they like. We want them to reach for books. Years ago, when my wife was a teacher in the 90s, kids would pick up a book and if they got frustrated with it, well, they would work toward it. Now we have tools that help us talk about this in addition to map growth. So we thought it was the right call to take that reading page. So a lot of times, parents weren't kind of sure what it meant to begin with. We put it underneath the heading with reading, are they reading independently at grade level? We thought that was more accurate and parents would see it right on the first page. It wouldn't get lost. And then Ms. Albertson has brought us the idea along with Dana Clark, our trainer, and Ms. Studo, our, our reading, she supports reading and she's a Brookdale principal. The idea of, I had the thought and I think I just lost it, but with, oh, the idea of with, I'm sorry, I lost the thought. I'll have to come back to it.
That's okay. So just to, just to confirm, the 1234, it goes along with what the rest of the report card is using. So it's more in line with that. It is a data point, it does give a lot of information.
Yeah.
And the teachers are really adept through extensive professional development that they have received on reading and writing workshop. We've been doing this program for what, 15 years?
For, for as long as I've been here.
Right, it's been, it's been a very long time. And we've modified it and moved it to a position where we feel is a best fit. We don't follow it 100% because there's other components to it that we have felt we've had to bring in.
Yeah, and I guess to finish my point, like, we'd rather talk about grade level ban, the bans for what they're reading. It's more, it's reflective more of what the child does, especially if you consider what their background reading level is. So just a letter.
And again, to be discussed in conferences and the teachers, right. And to my point I was just making is that the, the teachers are well adept at having these conversations with parents. And if a child was reading two grade levels below, that would be a conversation outside of conferences. That would happen well before conferences.
Yes, and through our intervention and referral services, we have two reading, with two academic literacy coaches that would be seeing these, these students if they were indeed a grade level or two behind. They're identified, they're run through the IRS process and they would work with either Ms. Duffy or Ms. Anderson to help them, help them catch back up, meeting with them two or three times a week to get back to grade level.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call for resolutions?
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Strappy.
Yes.
Mrs. Fresky.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
We have quorum motion pass.
Excellent, thank you. And we do have a couple of addendum resolutions. So I need a motion to accept the addenda resolutions number one through four. Moved by Mrs. Prisco. Second by Mrs. Strappy. Are there any discussion on those resolutions? If not, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Strappy.
Yes.
Mrs. Fresky.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
We have quorum motion pass.
Excellent, thank you very much. And that brings us to our next publicly, oh no, I'm sorry, public comments on any topic. And there are none. So that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. Our next public meeting will be on Tuesday, December 7th at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium. And I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'm going to give it to a move by Mr. Day and second by Mrs. Strappy, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And it is 9 o'clock, we're going to adjourn the meeting and I want to wish everybody a very safe and healthy, happy holiday weekend coming up. So thank you very much and have a good night.